I'd like to call this meeting to order. Due to the COVID-19 health emergency and in order for the Board of Education to conduct its business, this board meeting is being held via video conference and streamed live on YouTube on the district website at www ebinet.org. In addition, members of the public may provide comment at this meeting through Zoom by entering the following URL, meeting ID, and password into your web browser. Upon joining the meeting, your participation will be muted to ensure there is no disruption to the business being conducted by the Board of Education. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mrs. Gwos.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Lax.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Yay.
Mr. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Becker.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. Good evening. We are going to start out tonight with our superintendent's report. Dr. Valesky?
Thank you, President Becker, and good evening, everyone. The first week in October is designated by the state of New Jersey as the Week of Respect, which is wholeheartedly incorporated into the East Brunswick School District's curriculum. As an example, this year, one of the school-wide events at Lawrence Brook Elementary School for the Week of Respect was an outdoor story walk of the book Be Kind by Pat Zietlow-Miller. As a way to make the story come to life, pages of the stories were displayed on posters outdoors. As students traveled the path, they were invited to read the story and reflect on ways they can show kindness, both inside and outside of school. QR codes were on the posters, adding an innovative technology component so students could hear the story read aloud by teachers from Lawrence Brook. Families were also welcomed to the school each afternoon during the Week of Respect to enjoy the outdoor reading experience. Visitors wore masks and adhered to social distancing. Tuesday night, the EBEF held a partner-in-excellent ceremony in lieu of their annual dinner to honor three very deserving partners: Jane Mueller of RE/MAX Realty, EBHS chemistry teacher Leslie Anderson, and Erwin principal Joanne Shemilowicz. In addition, Joel Young was surprised with an unsung hero award for his hard work on the EBEF celebrity dance-off events. The event was attended by 24 people, who also socially distanced, with many others watching via livestream on YouTube. Virtual parent-teacher conferences will take place on Tuesday, October 20th, through Friday, October 23rd. There will be no supplemental virtual afternoon sessions on these days. And just a reminder, schools will be closed November 2nd through the 6th. If you're traveling to quarantined states identified on NJ.gov, you must quarantine 14 days upon your return, and especially before any return to school. The same applies if you intend to travel internationally. Consult CDC.gov for travel recommendations by destination. Select the Travelers' Health tab at the top of the website and click on the destination in the drop-down box to select your travel destination and latest advisories. At this time, most international destinations are considered high-risk and will require a 14-day quarantine upon your return. Working together, we can remain safe and continue all of our operations. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. I actually had a logistical question asked of me along those lines. Somebody, a parent, asked me, said that during that week, just coincidentally, their spouse will be traveling on business to a state that is on the list of states to quarantine from. So even though she and her child and her other children will not, the spouse will be going to whatever state it was, coming back, should she keep her children home?
No, they don't need to quarantine.
Okay.
Just the individual traveling will need to quarantine as a precaution. If the individual that traveled becomes symptomatic, then the other members of the family should quarantine immediately, seek testing, and stay quarantined until they get a result for the test.
Thank you. Logistics get hard.
Yeah. So actually, anytime anyone has any questions, please call our office. We can guide you through the process and the next step that you should be taking to protect yourselves and your families and, of course, all of the people that you come in contact with.
Thank you. Now we come to the good of the cause of the public. Members of the public may provide comment at this meeting through Zoom by entering the URL, meeting ID, and password that you see before you on your screen into the web browser of your computer. In order to be recognized, use the chat feature. Select the Zoom meeting host, then enter and send your name to the host. You will be recognized to speak when your name is called. Individuals will be invited to speak in the order in which we have received your request. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves. In order to permit fair and orderly expression of such comment, the Board shall provide a period for public comment at every meeting on the Board where participants are limited to three minutes duration. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak to the Board?
Give folks a couple of moments here, but so far, we have no requests. There's one.
Okay.
Steven Shen.
I'm sorry?
Steven Shen.
Steven, good evening.
Hi, I'm the person that talked about the glove safety last time. I'm just wondering, when can I get a window on the response?
He's asking about a response to his comments from the last meeting.
You have to refresh my recollection of the comment.
This is the student who had made some suggestions regarding protocols to take within one of the schools for eating snack, for example.
Right, about removing masks. I can reach out to you.
No, and gloves.
I can reach out.
Yeah, that was the snacks and the gloves. I would say that the best thing, Steven, is that the superintendent will reach out to you and have a conversation about that as he talks to the different administrators of each of the schools. I can't give you a specific time, but the superintendent would be the person who would reach out to you.
Steven?
Yeah?
Steven?
Yeah?
This is Dr. Valesky. What time do you finish school tomorrow?
Um, around 1:10 for like the morning thing, then...
Can I call your house tomorrow afternoon?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, we'll look you up in Genesis, we'll call you, okay?
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Steven. That's it?
That's it.
Okay, seeing none, I close the public portion. Moving on to the Board of Education items, can I please have a motion for items one through five?
So moved.
Second, moved by Mark, second by Li Wu. Is there any discussion? This is a roll call vote, so will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwos.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to the curriculum and instruction, can I please have a motion for the single item on that agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Jeff, second by Todd. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Mark?
Yeah, I just want to say, the $3,000, in the time of the pandemic, when everything's going up, I understood this cost in the area of $20,000 in a normal year, and I think that's fantastic, whoever set this up. $17,000 savings in the middle of this crisis is, I think, something that should be pointed out, and I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you.
Good point, Mark.
Dr. Bowley, it was Mrs. DeGrosjeur, right?
That's correct.
That negotiated that.
That's right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Moving on to the financial services, can I please have a motion for items one through eight?
So moved, Jeff.
I'm sorry?
So moved, Jeff.
Moved by Jeff?
Second.
Second by Susanna. Is there any discussion? This is a roll call vote, will the Secretary please call the roll?
Yes, and as a reminder, Board members who are voting on the travel, their respective travel reports, must abstain on those reports. Beginning the roll call, Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwos.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes, abstain for item number seven.
Thank you. Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes, abstain, item number eight.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to the human resources agenda, there are three items on this agenda this evening. Can I please have a motion for three, one through three? Moved by Jeff, second by Todd. Is there any discussion? This is a roll call vote, will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwos.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. We have one item on our staff development agenda tonight, may I please have a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved by Li Wu, second by Mark. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Student services agenda, can I please have a motion for items one through three?
So moved.
Moved by Todd, second by Mark. Is there any discussion? All, this is a roll call vote, will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwos.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese. Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Transportation services, I'd like to combine items one through three, can I please have a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved by Todd.
Second.
Second by Mark. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. I believe our student rep is with us tonight. How are you? How's everything going?
Everything is good. As always, it is a pleasure. As always, it is a pleasure to give this report, especially now in mid-October, where for a lot of seniors, it's a little bit of a stressful time, especially if they're applying to a considerable amount of early schools, mainly because, you know, college deadlines are really accumulating now, one of them even being, one of the earliest ones being even today, October 15. So, thank you to the students who are doing through that, and also to the counselors who are helping guide the students through that. I myself also have a good amount of early schools due about like next week and early November, so this is a pretty impactful and influential time for a lot of the seniors. And it's also a little different because there's a little discussion on what will next year look like in college. There has been surveys done with other students about the willingness to take gap years, especially considering the uncertainties of what college would look like, and the willingness to pay the financials, and the willingness to take gap years has mostly increased in a lot of students, and even students now have already, you know, committed to taking gap years, which is really unseen. Also, I did want to touch upon the fact that, obviously, students are appreciative of the protocols in place and the transparency from the administration, and the fact that the high school is a safe environment, but there has been a slight increase in concern for the safety of the students, and this is reflected slightly in my social circles and in the high school by a slight increase in the number of students who are transferring from hybrid to virtual. But this is natural, a natural reaction to the, I guess, number of cases rising and small surge, but not once in that process has it ever forgotten that the district has always been acting with the best interests and most care for the students in mind. So, that's one thing that I wanted to address, and for the future, there are a few events on the horizon, outdoor events potentially, and there are a lot of student administration and organizations like the PTSA, Student Council, NHS, that have, you know, those events hopefully coming up so that way it can make this non-traditional year look a little bit more traditional. And that's it.
Thank you so much. Good report.
Thank you.
Any committee reports, information items, good of the cause of the Board? Mark?
Good of the cause. I do recognize all the work that all the staff's been doing during this pandemic, but for today, I wanted to talk about the teachers for a minute. They've been asked to do something unprecedented, teaching to students in the classroom at home at the same time. The hours they put in, again, unprecedented. I just wanted to give them a thank you and tell them, it does not go unnoticed by the parents, the staff, the admin, Dr. Valesky. We all see what you're doing out there, and I'm very proud of it, so I wanted to share that for tonight. So, thank you.
Well said.
Great remarks.
Anyone else? Jeff?
I agree with everything Mark said, and I will say that the plan that's been put in place, which I still consider to be the second-best option in the district, has been highly effective. The safest option is, of course, being all virtual, but as the second option, I think this plan has been really exceptionally executed up to this point. You know, anecdotally, you know, I think somebody who has somebody they know who drove 100 miles an hour down a New Jersey turnpike, nothing happened to them, so they said, you know what, we could all start going 100 miles an hour because nothing happens. I have a lot of concern around the latest sports athletic announcements that were made. This is a game changer and is testing this program, this methodology, which you've effectively put in place. I disagree wholeheartedly that we should be putting our students inside a building and playing contact sports such as basketball, which is oddly listed as a medium-intact sport, but certainly things like wrestling. The CDC today did recognize this issue, and I'm sure you saw that report had come out after the agenda for this meeting and after your announcement from yesterday's meeting. And one area that was cited anecdotally was a group of people, 22 people then in Tampa, who get together and play ice hockey, age range from 19 to 53. 14 people were affected and are now infected. I don't like the idea of any time an issue like this is brought back to, not in East Brunswick, because that is simply delusional. So factually, that is correct. We do seem to have it under control, but now we are inviting students from other areas into our district or us into theirs, and we've lost all control at that point. We don't know where they've been, who they've been with, how they're feeling, and maybe they just want to get out of their house and play some ball, at the detriment of our students. I want to seriously consider if we are doing the wise thing or if we too are just going to go 100 miles an hour because everybody else is. And I really want to take pause before we, and I don't know what the governing, the governance is regarding the NSIAA. I'm under the impression that there are some options there, and this is not a commandment. It's a guideline. I could be wrong, but that's how I interpreted it. So if our job is what I believe our job is to be, is to maintain the safest environment, we've already chosen the second safest option. I would hate to test this by just opening the doors. I could just see this as ending so poorly, as it's becoming evident and now recognized by the governing body that you acknowledged mostly as you pieced together the plan, and you, Dr. Valesky. So, that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
If I could, I want to, you know, assure Mr. Winston and the rest of the Board, we're not going to move at 100 miles an hour, and so we have, obviously, we have plans to, you know, continue to offer sports, but NJ-SIAA offered guidance that was modified this week that I shared with all the Board members this afternoon, and we are still deploying all of the safeguards for all of the winter sports. And I will keep the Board informed well before we do anything on what the protocols are, what setbacks we may have, and we will continue to monitor not only the conditions within East Brunswick, but within the township and within the county, which we know change every single day. So I assure you, we are going to make sure that we don't step off and go 100 miles an hour, that we want to go very methodical, and we want to be, safety still continues to be a number-one priority. But what I saw, I was at the high school facility this afternoon, and what I saw was almost every one of our outdoor facilities in use today, but that's outdoors, and we're moving events indoors. It's a new dynamic, and I acknowledge the concerns, Mr. Winston, and we're going to have to address them if we intend to do this safely and be a role model in doing it, because I don't want to have any students getting sick, I don't want to have any parents getting sick, I don't want to have any grandparents getting sick. So I will keep you informed as we move along the process.
Todd?
I certainly don't envy the decisions that you have to make around this. Didn't the governor weigh in on this and specifically?
He did.
That's what Jeff...
Yes, the governor, what opened it up to what? To indoor?
All indoor sports, including, that includes ice hockey, wrestling, so all indoor sports including those of contact nature.
So the governor has done that. Now, we've been taking, and I certainly have been, the impression, we've been taking direction from the governor.
Right.
All along, and so far, with what we've done, which is both hybrid and giving the stay-at-home option, right? Has worked out well. I think you have indicated there has been no known spread in the buildings.
No, we have not.
So nobody that we're aware of, at least that we know, has actually spread it in our buildings. So I'm still inclined to go with your gut here. You have so far a pretty good track record. I think the thing, the announcements that you have been making every day or every other day, in part, I think, just to check in with everybody, which I think people like, is hearing your voice, it's kind of comforting, but I also think that we're aware of sort of the isolated things going on outside of here, because people are telling you. Again, you know, I struggle with the decisions that the state has to make, and you do, but I am comfortable that so far, you have been making pretty measured, informed choices. So, and I guess the results are what we're seeing, which is really nothing in the buildings and such, but like I said, you know, the state does issue guidelines, and unless we had some very unusual circumstance here to, that would give you reason to depart from them, I mean, staying the course, I think, seems to be reasonable.
I mean, I certainly understand the concerns, because we are changing the environment by moving to indoor practices and indoor competitions, and essentially, the guidance offered by NJ-SIAA at this point is intended to limit the number of attendees within those events. So right now, they cap the number of individuals at 25. Unless the essential people for the competition exceed that, and you can go above that, but it's intended at this point to really be restrictive in terms of not having spectators, and that includes parents at this, at this point, at the events. But, you know, the guidance talks about ventilation, it talks about sanitization, and those are things that we have addressed, but we have to make sure that they're done consistently with integrity every single time. So we still have things to work out, not every, we have plans for every sport, but as I said, we continue to watch the medical data and the transmission data every single day, and that guides where I'm going for the next day, because one of the factors that I always, I always said, if we have to retract, if we have to step back, we will do that for the safety of everyone, but right now, we're going to make a plan, we're going to assess each time, each day we come into work, and I'll keep the Board informed as we move to that next step, each incremental step, so you know as much as I do.
Well, and I'll add too, one thing that I do hear from parents is that because you are calling with such frequency, the impression is you are taking this day by day?
Yes.
So that's, that is the impression you're leaving people with.
And that's, I think, one of the, one of the game changers for us is, and I will say it again for the public and everybody logged in tonight, it is about our own personal behavior, and I keep emphasizing that, about rapid self-reporting. That has been critical for us, that a family, an individual who is known to be infected with COVID, or they've been in the presence of somebody who's infected with COVID, and them telling us so we can immediately react to it is certainly a critical piece of us maintaining operations. And I, you know, there's no, there's no shame in reporting, because you're protecting yourselves and so many other people, and I'm really proud of our community, as I said tonight, because that is exactly what they've done. Every single case that we've had has been self-reported. We haven't had somebody whisper down the lane and say, hey, by the way, we think somebody may have been somewhere they shouldn't. It's all been self-reported, and people have been great. You know, last Friday, when we had to quarantine a team, and it was, you know, senior night, and the parents have been great, everybody understands, they understand the impact of this. So it takes, takes every one of us doing the right thing every single moment of every single day to make this work, and so far, we're doing it. I just encourage everyone to continue.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky.
Question? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Worried then, Jeff?
It's fine.
I was going to say, Jeff, if it gives you any peace of mind as a sports parent who has a child who's been playing outside the district right now, they take very, very good steps. So right now, the way it works is, all the children, the temperatures are taken, they wear the masks until they actually play. The kids have been terrific. If kids don't feel well, they don't show up, because I had asked the question once, I said, does anyone actually show up with a fever? And they don't, and they've had kids that have personally said, as much as I don't want to miss this, I'm going to miss it because I was in a situation where I could be at close contact. So I think what's happening is a lot of people want to make sure that sports works. It's not just necessarily a matter of wanting to get outside and get some exercise, although that's a very big part for these kids, but a lot of these kids realize when this ends, they want their athletic career to continue, and they want to stay in shape, and they want to have something outside of just the academic rigor of life. So I think for a lot of these kids, there's really a very important part of the sports. The camaraderie is still being experienced, because unfortunately, the way that the world is working with our remote and hybrid, a lot of these kids can't get that right now from their classmates. So the team sports has really been something that brings these kids together, and as I said, I give the parents a lot of credit and I give the kids a lot of credit, because the kids are doing what they're supposed to do. And I've been to some of these things where if the kids are told, take your temperature, wear your mask, Purell before and after, they do everything right. And unfortunately, it doesn't necessarily stop it, and you may see cases, and we've seen that so far outside the school, but for the most part... But for the most part, I think it's terrific that these kids are getting to still experience this. And I hope it continues, and I hope we're safe going into the winter sports for our school teams because there's no perfect answer. I understand and I applaud your concern because I have it too. You know, I'm very close to my parents. So, I am someone who does everything that I can to make sure that I stay safe and my kids stay safe. I don't put them in situations. So, I can never, ever say thank you enough for being the kind of person that brings that up and always has safety first. But at the same time, I also want to say that I think that a part of these kids' lives and the access to the sports is something that's probably psychologically keeping a lot of these kids really on pace with life and not slipping into the depression and the video games. Because that's, you know, as a parent, that's one of my biggest fears, is that kids have nothing but to go to school online, stare at a computer all day, and then play their video games with their friends all night. You know, I like the idea that they're getting a little bit of exercise and, as I said, the team camaraderie. So, we're going to hope and pray that this works and that people continue to do the right thing.
Thank you, Laurie. Jeff, I think you were next.
I did. I was lost. I don't disagree with anything you said. I do believe, you know, I'm no psychologist, but I do believe the psychological impact of the kids playing these sports. I do understand the need for them to get out. I do believe school athletics is great. And like you, I too am the parent of a varsity athlete in East Brunswick. So, all of these thoughts conflict with everything going on in my house. So, that doesn't fall flat with me. But then I just, you know, sit, actually, you know, I ask the question, with all of the reasoning that you just gave and all of the reasoning that I'm hearing in terms of bringing these kids back, what does the conversation sound like if, say, all of a sudden, we have 20 infected on the basketball team? Does the conversation turn to, geez, you know, we really should have thought about it? Or I'm sorry that coach got sick? Or I'm sorry that kid brought it home to their immune-suppressed parent? Does the conversation change at that point? I mean, I'm a huge fan of everything you just said, but I'm even a bigger fan of proactivity in the face of logic, practical solutions. I don't need the CDC to tell me that if I bring 10 kids from within my district and 10 kids from outside my district, all of those protocols, I can't say that it's happening in our neighboring communities. But we've opened the door for a delivery system of anything that can happen. I know our kids are sanitizing. I know they're washing their hands. I know our kids are wearing a mask. And that's where our knowledge ends. And we've simply invited in a variable that we can't control. I'm a math guy. I mean, this is just a logical string of, I remove all emotion. There's no emotion in this room. We've chosen the second safest option, and we've compounded it by allowing an outside influence that we can't control that, as in the case in Tampa, I mean, 60-something percent of the people in that room who played hockey for two and a half hours are sick. What does the conversation sound like then? God forbid that this doesn't go as, you know, in the panacea in which you described. It's a bad conversation. It's a real bad conversation. And then it compounds with the stresses of all the quarantines, of all of the contacts, and all the families and in the classroom, and those stressful three days of wondering what happens next? You talk about psychological damage. Talk to some of these kids who got quarantined recently on one of the athletic teams. I had to deal with one of them crying on the phone. That's a different conversation. So, we can wave the flag of success, which I again say it's a little early for celebration here. And then as the winter approaches and we now have introduced athletics into the equation, an uncontrollable variable.
I agree with that. Look, I'm not waving any celebratory flag at this point because I don't think we get to do that until we're all safe and this goes away. The only thing I'll say in terms of your Tampa example is the age group that you mentioned are adults. And unfortunately, you hear about, and it happens to some extent on the college campuses, and you hear about it in bars, you know, adults are adults. Children are ones that are under our control. So, if the parents are doing the correct thing, the children are doing the correct thing because the children have to be in a position to get to places they shouldn't be. So, I understand exactly what you're saying with that Tampa scenario. I just look at it and say, unfortunately, it's an adult. If one person on that team went to a bar and was, with a mask off and was exposed to someone, they then bring that. Where these children, especially sports kids, these are kids that want to be successful at sports. They tend to be kids that are, you know, interested in keeping their bodies healthy and doing the right thing. So, you know, to say outside of our town, I don't know that I would agree with that. Look, and I agree with you. And I'm that person that says, you know, I like kids at my house because I know that I do things correctly. I shouldn't say correctly. I know how I run my household, and I know that I feel safe if I invite someone in. And I'm very careful where my children go if it's someplace that I deem not safe. But I will say, just to say someone outside East Brunswick, my son plays on an AAU team, and he spent the summer in all sorts of parks in all these different urban communities. And just because they're not from East Brunswick or, you know, don't, you know, live in the same kind of homes that we do here, these kids, they did everything right. Their parents were wearing masks just like ours. So, I like to think that the towns outside of ours, hopefully, are mirroring what we're doing. And it's parents that they're having their children that play sports, take their temperatures, stay out of situations that could potentially put them in harm's way. As much as we do everything right, Jeff, I agree with you. And you, you know, my husband laughs at me that I'm a germaphobe and that the whole world caught up to me, and now I'm normal because everyone else is doing what I do. That being said, I can do everything right. There is nothing to stop me or a member of my family from contracting this. And I hope that doesn't happen, obviously. And I live my life in a way to potentially keep that from happening. But the reality is all we can do is the right things by ourselves, by our kids, you know? And then you have to kind of hope and pray that there's a little bit of luck involved. I just hate to demonize sports. And I understand because you are a sports parent. You're a good sports parent, and I get that.
You're demonizing.
I'm just saying that I just, I guess, to me, the benefits of sports and the sports program to me are so important that as long as they're done correctly, I don't know that there's much more we can do. If we're doing everything to keep them safe, then I'm hoping and praying that that will be enough. And certainly, just seeing the self-reporting and the care that parents and kids have taken just gives me a lot of hope for the sports program.
Heather? I wanted to say, not so much partaking of this, but I wanted to thank Dr. Valesky and the other parts of the administration for giving the children the opportunity to play sports. I'm probably one of the most conservative people I know about not opening up my house, not letting my family go places. We have been very, very shut down. But we have done that with the idea that they can choose moments where they do want to venture forth and try to be as safe as possible. And one of those for my family has been sports. So, while my children did not go places this summer when other children did, they are playing sports right now. And I think that I, more than anyone, can speak to this because I do have a quarantined child. So, I think I can say safely, I do know how that feels. I know how it feels to have a kid who has to stay home right now. That said, not only do I thank Dr. Valesky for this, giving them the opportunity to do it, they're doing it so well. I'm so impressed with the way the coaches act. I'm so impressed with the way the students act. And I do think it's part of our obligation to provide a safe environment and to keep the students safe. But it's also to educate them. And the thing that's been most surprising for me in all of this is that I'm seeing the children learn things that I didn't think they would get out of this. I really didn't. And I'm a huge sports parent and a big fan of the scholar-athlete. But what I'm seeing our students gain from this right now is this level of responsibility that it never occurred to me would come from this situation. I'm seeing students make choices about not going out because they want to protect their team. They want to be able to play. They're making very, very adult responsible choices. They are giving up opportunities to go places and do things that would benefit them to protect their team as a whole. And I think that Dr. Valesky is not only providing a transparency and a very thoughtful system that is evaluated and evaluated. I don't think we're just laying it down and saying, this is it. I think it's looked at so often. But I think we've also created the situation where the students are learning not just to take care of themselves and look at college and what's coming for them next, but they really are looking out for each other, for their community. It's just an entirely different mindset that I've never seen before, and I'm so impressed with them.
Levo?
So, I just want to say, this is a very difficult time. And nobody knew, nobody had experience for this kind. I want to thank Dr. Valesky and the entire faculty and the entire community to teach our students